I'll call this meeting to order of the town of Hilton Head Island's planning commission. Our first order of business, as always, is the pledge allegiance to our flag. If you'll join me, my pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States
America
To the republic
And let it be what it stands for.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. A important case to work. Theresa, may I ask, are we in compliance with the Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, great. May I, Theresa, may I ask you to call the role of the commissioner?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sebold?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. O'Neill? Mr. O'Neill, if you could unmute?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Darienzo?
Here.
Mr. Collett?
Here.
Mr. Hen?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Does the staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. The commission, can I have a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So here, so we want to.
Do you have a motion?
Show your hands if you want to give the motion.
No.
Okay, Jim and Rick are seconding the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand approving the agenda for today's meeting. I see a unanimous vote. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting of January the 5th. May I have, by show of hand, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of that January 5th meeting? Thank you, Jim, and Tom is the second on that. All in favor of approving the minutes of the January 5th meeting? I see a unanimous vote on that as well, Theresa. Next item is appearance by citizens. Theresa, do we have any public comments for today's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments concerning agenda items were submitted electronically via the open town hall portal. Those comments were provided to the commission and made part of the official record. In addition to submitting comments on the portal, citizens were provided the opportunity to call into the meeting to comment on agenda items. However, there were no requests to give public comments by phone. Thank you.
We did receive some comments via the internet, did we not, or the town website?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, I hope the members of the commission have a chance to go through those and read them. Next, we have no unfinished business, so let's move right on to our new business for today. Mr. Mark Orlando, our town manager, was kind enough to agree to come before us today to outline his strategic plan that's been approved by town council. And he's joined by Josh Gruber, I believe, and they will give us a presentation on this because my request to Mark when we first talked about this was to try to get a feel for what's in store over the next year or two and all the various projects. But to find out which of these projects would probably have to work their way through the planning commission and route to town council approval. Mr. Orlando, the floor is yours. You're muted. You're muted, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of Planning Commission. It's really nice to be here with you today. I look forward to sharing this presentation with you. I'm going to share my screen and just really work through the town council adopted strategic plan. There we go. It's very important, as I start, definitely a big thank you and very grateful for a town council that really put the work in, that put the time in to work through the various elements that are really needed to be in place to adopt, really to think through and adopt a strategic plan. Of course, we had a great start using our plan. Our plan has that base document. And so that greatly helped me understand the community sentiment, the public input, and those high-level priorities in the community. This plan is definitely not something put together by Josh or I. It's been put together by all of senior staff, by a lot of staff members indirectly from the folks that worked on our plan, and definitely a lot of time from the town council members. And so, most recently, we had an October 21st strategic plan workshop where I talked with council for the good part of the day, and most recently, a month or a couple of months ago, the town council adopted this plan. So I'll dive right in and show you a few of the things. Excuse me while I get my mouse set here. There we go. There we go. One sec. I've got a little delay. Hold on. There we go. So it's really important that this first slide really show that our plan has that foundation document, and you can see my mouse scrolling over our plan on the bottom-left corner. But really, how are we going to always use this as a, I would say, a baseline template process for us to be successful together? So as we establish our vision and mission and further our refinement of goals, strategies, and tactics, how does it all play out? And what we've intended to do is to show that our plan guides the strategic action plan, and the strategic action plan directs the annual operating budget and is influenced by the annual operating budget. So I always say, there's really no sense trying to say that we're going to get all these great things done out of a strategic plan if the funds and the resources aren't in place to accomplish. And that annual operating budget, as it comes out of the strap plan, is really empowering the strategic management, really the work that needs to be done to implement the strategic plan through the budget. These strategic plan goals should look very familiar. They're straight out of the comprehensive plan. So we require and sustain excellence of place, people, planning, and process, and I won't read them all to you. But it's very important that we realize that we strive for a pursuit of excellence, that we're environmentally sustainable, to revitalize our economy, that we have an inclusive community, a connected community with a regional focus. We also focus on rightsizing infrastructure, and Parks and Rec is pulled out as an element equal to these other elements as we implement the Parks and Rec master plan. So I think the foundation of the strategic plan, as it's in place currently and just recently adopted, is very clear right here that those goals make up the goals of the strategic plan. I'll have this presentation on the website for reference. Today, I will not go through all of the various elements. We'd be here for hours. You can see that under each section of these goals, really under each of the goals, there with me. Just having some delay. There we go. Under each one of these goals, you'll see that there are policy priorities. So implementing the American Rescue Plan funding appropriation, where we received $5.2 million from the federal government, and I worked with town council to allocate those funds. Some for infrastructure, some for IT, some for housing. Those are in place and clear on our strategic plan priority list, and all the way down to re-establishing our real estate transfer fee. So what you can see is that these elements of the strategic plan, as stated, strategies and goals are very clear. The goal being excellence of policy, the strategy being these various elements. You can refer to these, but as I go through them, there's a lot, and I'm going to pause at some of the ones that I think will jump out at us on the page to really know that Planning Commission will be involved along the way. Not to say any that I jump over. We wouldn't bring to Planning Commission for some guidance either. So you can see, adopting a beach master plan is a very important element. But we're also working on some policy enhancements as well with Beach Shuttle, as well as adopting an HR strategic plan and an IT department strategic plan. There's various operational elements that I will focus on internally that don't need town council policy direction, but are very important to the town, very important to the organization, very important to staff, one of which is creating a culture of high organizational performance. Another is putting an app in place that really is in place, where if you see something in our community, you can click on a mobile app, put a work request order into town facility staff. We respond to you, and we, whether if it's for us to fix or Beaufort County or otherwise, we get back to the person that made the request. So you can see, none of those really affect Planning Commission, but but elements in the strategic plan that staff is prioritized with council direction to improve our operations. Under the section, creating a resilient and sustainable environment, implementing our beach re-nourishment program, a SWOT analysis of our solid waste and recycling regional program, working with PSDs to establish or understand long-term cap projects, and then also a SWOT analysis of our island resiliency. Definitely, the SWOT analysis of our island resiliency as it will become public policy that should drive our future capital projects, as well as, you know, land management ordinance provisions will definitely be coming to and through Planning Commission as we work on that plan. Sorry, I've just got some delay here. I apologize. Environmental policy. Oh. I apologize.
Sorry, economic, there we are.
Good when it works. Technology's great when it works.
There you go.
There we go. We're also working to adopt a model business license ordinance, which is done. We're implementing it now. Developing a town-owned property asset management and utilization plan. A DMO marketing plan that's intentional, and we work with town council ahead of time, working on an economic development strategy. So what is our responsibility as it relates to economic development in our organization and community? And then also, working to establish a historic and cultural district development corporation. That was an outcome and recommendation, policy recommendation out of the William Hilton Parkway Gateway Corridor project, one of 26 recommendations. One of them was to establish a development corp to help advance, as a starting point, the stony community from an economic and community development standpoint. We know that we are an inclusive community as we implement the Golegiachi Task Force work plan. We've been working on this for a while. I think it's important that it's in the strategic plan so that we continue to work on it to finalize the work that we said we would accomplish. Establishing a public-private partnership with USCB on supportive of culture and art. And I'm going to jump through some others because there are some bigger sections. Assist with the relocation of St. James Baptist Church, e-bike, e-scooter regs. And here's where Planning Commission starts getting involved. So there's a lot of work leading up to this section in and of itself. But as we think through our current zoning map, and perhaps some opportunities to revitalize small pieces of our island that are obvious that need some help. In the strategic plan, it reads, adopt a mid-island redevelopment strategy and a park master plan. It's really the Mid-Island Track, the old Planters Row Golf Course, 103 acres. And as we look at that golf course tract, it's obvious what we all will do. We'll all try to come up with understanding the site, as well as trying to determine what are the highest and best community uses on that tract. But as we take a look at the front side of this sentence, adopting the Mid-Island redevelopment strategy, we know that it's surrounded by, oh gosh, a lot of the built environment that we know is the Mid-Island, Port Royal Plaza, Northridge, Sea Turtle Marketplace, the airport, residential communities that have been there for generations. And what's really important is, we take a look at this area, we really look at the zoning district, red, yellow, blue, purple, whatever the color is on the zoning map. And I think that we really have to take a look at, through this redevelopment strategy, our base zoning and think through establishing a growth framework that really should force the issue of looking at future land uses and then aligning our zoning map with the redevelopment district, with the growth framework, with the future land use analysis, so that our zoning and development standards support where we want to go. And it's challenging the norm a little bit. It's definitely challenging the status quo of the zoning map. But definitely, Planning Commission as a priority partner to town council in order to think through the redevelopment strategy is so important. It's arguably resetting, if that's what council directs, a piece of the zoning map, one redevelopment district at a time. And so definitely, the need for staff to work very closely with Planning Commission on that assessment of land uses, as well as the recommendation of future land uses through and to the town council. And so I really explained the final three bullet points here, the Mid-Island redevelopment strategy. Of course, there's the Mid-Island tract, the 103 acres, the master plan for that. But very importantly, a growth framework, an illustrative master plan, and then a real good SWOT analysis of the LMO to make sure that our future is planned out and laid out in our land use regulations and our development code. So very involved with Planning Commission along the way. There's some regional work to do on impact fees. Definitely assessing the creation of a regional housing trust fund. Town council heard a presentation from Beaufort County Administrator recently about the housing trust fund. I know that there's some work to do still to truly understand how that can benefit Hilton Head Island and the region. In fiscal year 21, I know that Beaufort County is working on the last long-range transportation plan to put some updates in that. One of which would be a signalized intersection improvement on the island on the smart technology-based signalized intersections. And so elements like that are being worked on by our traffic engineer, by some planning staff. I know that at the appropriate time, that last long-range transportation plan will be worked on with town council. A lot of which, a lot of the elements of which would convert to capital projects. And I know that, I don't know the exact date, but the CIP team led by Jen Ray, we're so blessed to have her. I know she led and was participating with our plan, but she's now leading the capital improvement program. And I know that she'll be meeting with the CIP Subcommittee of Planning Commission in mid-February to prioritize fiscal year 23 capital projects as we bring those forward to town council. So I know, Mr. O'Neill, you've been involved as the chair of the committee and rest of Planning Commission. Stay tuned for more on that. We also have in the strategic plan, implementing a workforce and affordable housing strategy on February 22nd. I, along with Sean Collin and a couple other staff members, definitely Anne Siren, will be bringing forward an update to town council since the last workshop on our thoughts in regard to a workforce and affordable housing strategy. So stay tuned for that. Tune in if you can on February 22nd. We still have quite a bit of work to do before that date so that I can wrap my mind around, and Sean can wrap his mind around, a proposed strategy moving forward to address workforce and affordable housing. But again, if there are policy outcomes, and most likely there will be, that affect our land management ordinance, as it would affect any zoning, as it would affect some housing policy that really would get embedded into a housing program, I know that we will be working with Planning Commission to think through and help us as well make some good recommendations to town council. And you can see the rest on there. I won't bore you and read every single element. I want to show you our website a little bit. And then we have here some operational improvements for Parks and Rec, establishing a marketing plan, assisting the county with Ford Shell Ring. And so how do we make sense of this? And I'm going to switch over to our website in a second. But again, we held the workshop in October. The town council considered this in November, and we are now two months, almost two months into implementing. We've provided a pretty sophisticated, I would call it a very nimble and quick Excel spreadsheet that lives online and is very accessible by the public. I'm going to share our website real quick. And if you get on the town's main page, and here we are, beautiful site. It just won an award. Forgive me for not knowing what award. I'm just excited that Renee and a whole bunch of folks internally put this website together. But real-time information, as you get to the main page, whether you check in agendas, major initiatives, permits, and licensing, of course, strategic action plan jumps right onto the page. We have a dashboard, and the dashboard is what I call an airtable. As we click on the dashboard, every element that I just wrote or read to you that was in the presentation is here listed. So this, as I know it, is the strategic plan action agenda. And so whether we're implementing the American Rescue Plan Fund from a policy directive, or if there are some operational improvements we're making, and I'll click down to some of the ones that I highlighted with you. Let's see here.
Well, just to let you know, it's not showing up on the screen.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Nice. Okay, let's try something different. I'm going to stop my share. Sometimes it does that. I'll share again. I'll share again.
There you go. It's there now.
Ah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
There we go. So I don't know if anything showed up, but here's what I did. I got to the town's main page. I clicked on the strategic action plan button, and I will click on the dashboard, and the dashboard should show us what the strategic initiative is that the Department of Responsibility is listed, whether it's fire rescue or HR or executive. It'll show you who the project manager is. It'll let you know what fiscal year the project starts. So of course, we can't do everything at once. Well, I'd like to get As and some Bs. I think if we do everything at once, we're going to get a bunch of Cs. And so there's some things that we said, hey, we just can't start yet, although we know they're important. So in the pipeline, they start in '23. Some things have started back in 2020. Other elements in '21, '22, it shows you. And then it's also trying to be very clear with the committee chairs. We have three town council committees, as you know. And I'm trying to be very clear in the listing in this airtable to show what committee these elements will move through with some project notes and updates every month. You should also be able to see my screen here, where we've really just showed, you know, this is the strategic plan as you know it, and if we want a direct link to it, we dive in a little further and let the community and the public know really what the goal is and what the strategy, as well as the tactic, is to accomplish. So, you know, as we could click through some of this stuff, you can see that the staff's done a good job, literally thinking through what we need to do from first quarter in any calendar year, from the beginning to end of every element. So I can go deeper. I could talk about this all day long. I'm sure you don't want me to. But, you know, it's on the website. The presentation should be available. I know that community development director will soon sit down with the chair of Planning Commission to work through that pipeline that I just showed, so that we can start planning appropriate agendas within the next 12 months. This plan already is paying dividends for me. I have a three-month pipeline of agendas that I've I've etched out with our town clerk so that I know what's coming and when. And so we're not so reactive. It's a lot more proactive ever since we adopted that plan. Those elements have been scrubbed. Most of them, if not all of them, have come out of the comprehensive plan, out of our plan, and/or across my desk in the first six months in my position here. So I'm very available to answer any questions today in the future. And I appreciate you having me. Sorry for a couple of those technical glitches that might be user error. It might be the system. I don't know.
Thank you, Mark, very kindly. Theresa, I would call on you to go through the commissioners and ask for discussion or comments or questions.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Perry?
Unmute now.
Mr. Perry, you're on mute.
There we go. There we go. So I'm gonna go, Mark, I'm gonna go a little bit before you came on board here and talk about when we went through our plan, and, you know, the comment came around, how are we going to implement this? What are we going to do? Well, I got my book the other day, and I actually did read it. And I got to tell you, it is in great detail of the plan and how we move forward. And I think that it is transparent. It is clear. And I really think it's going to help guide us in a great, to achieve our goals of being excellent and the other aspects that are within our plan. So I really think that you and staff and council have done a tremendous job in putting together a document that drives us forward for the coming years.
Thank you for that feedback.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I'd certainly concur with everything that Alan said. Mark, this is really a professional job by you and your team. Couple of questions. One is, I'm always a priority nut. And right back from, you know, the division steering committee, when we're trying to determine what are the real priorities, say, the five to 10 things that are very, very important for you and your team and council to get right during this first year. Do you have some thoughts on that? If you had to choose five?
Oh, I would love to choose five. You know, my honest assessment of it is, one, I think it's very clear that everything that's already started is very important, right? So if we start it, let's finish it. It's embedded now in the strategic plan, so let's pick a couple of things. Implementing the Golegiachi Task Force recommendations. Working through some policy initiatives as it relates to the LMO. And so let's kick off the redevelopment strategy. Really building our capital improvement program. One of the elements, and I jumped through it today, one of the elements in there is the CIP program, right? So I have an awesome staff, but a brand-new team. An awesome staff and but a brand new team. Um and they have about twenty two million dollars of live capital projects right now. Pretty awesome crossings park, design Chaplain Park Design, uh Mid Island Track Design, so. I I don't know how to pick five, but I know that the capital program is important. The ongoing policy that we've already started is important. The redevelopment district. Um and part of that is a baseline assessment of. The island, I don't wanna say, let's figure out the island capacity, and if we get, you know. Fifty more cars on the road, we're going to be in trouble, but true baseline of. How many homes, so many short term rentals, so many hospital beds, so many kids are in the school. What's the level of service on the road? To truly do that work, that's very important, so if we kick that off. And really refine these development redevelopment districts. And start aligning land use code and development code. With our preferred alternative for the future. You know, William Hilton Parkway, speaking of preferred alternative, William Hilton Parkway Gateway. Is important, but so's the rest of the Parkway as it relates to. Intersection treatment, pathway connections. And signalize intersections that are more uh adaptive to real time pressures. Than the ones we have today, so. Mark, I'd love to just find five things, I think that you could take a look and assess that strategic plan. Those operational items, I'm gonna get them done as much as I can internally. Those elements that are in the policy sections, those remain as my high priorities because they need town council action. Um redevelopment districts, capital projects, and a lot of our ongoing policy initiatives. So that we can finish what we started some years ago.
Well, thank you, that 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 really helps. Um one other question then. Do you do you have the alignment or the match that you need um with resources, in particular personnel resources to do all of this?
Uh you know, one, I inherited an incredible staff, and there are many resident experts in different topics in this organization. Um I'm still, just like every other company that we know. Trying to find the right people at the right time that wanna come work here. Uh I've had a couple of. Opportunities to bring in a new community development director on board this past year, and we got pretty far down the road and. For whatever reasons, um it just didn't work out. Uh and so I'm gonna keep working hard to find that director position. I think that the staff is in place, I'm missing probably three or four key positions. And. You know, it's it's just part of the challenges, but also uh I'm excited to find the right people, so. We're close, but but not just yet, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, no further questions, this is really a good job, Mark.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Alfred.
Um very much appreciate your making this presentation, I found it very helpful and uh. My understanding of the plan and where we're going. Uh I think as previously said, you've done an extraordinary job. Uh and uh the questions or comments that I would have raised have already been raised, so I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir. Nice to see you today.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, I looked at the plan is excellent, I love it. Um I do have one question is about the affordable housing.
Mm hmm, yes, sir.
I know I'm working on a big track lane in Bluffton. And a group is buying it, and in Bluffton, I noticed that they have an affordable housing committee. That dictates. That dictates um what kind of affordable housing is going in a certain development. Like price point, if it's a town houses or if it's houses. Would you think that's a good idea to implement that on Hilton Head Island?
Uh I don't know yet, I think we'll have to get to the February twenty second Town Council Workshop. I know at some point there needs to be some sort of ad hoc housing group. I don't know if it's a housing committee, I don't know if it's an ad hoc group of town council or planning commission. And John, I I think I need to give that some thought, definitely talk to town council about that. But at the very least, I know that we need to mobilize a small team to help guide us. Um as we come out of that February twenty two meeting, I was very involved in the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh out in Bluffton in the formation of it with Councilman Fred Hamilton as the Chair. There there's some great benefit there, and their focus is is monthly and regularly, I think that helps. Um but I need to get through the February twenty two meeting. To see what the direction is from town council on on my recommendation and. Or our staff's recommendation led by me and our proposal.
Okay. All right. Thanks, that's all I have.
All right, great to see you.
This is you too.
Mr. Siebel.
Uh like Alan and others, I took the chance to go through that longer material that came to us and found that to be. Excellent work, and today's presentation was a great executive summary of all that, so uh thank you and your staff for that good work and. Keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Darienzo.
Yes, thank you, Teresa. I've worked my way through this document as well, and it's just, it's very organized and very clear. How it's layered so professionally and it makes it very readable and actionable. I just have a. There are obviously a number of different issues that will filter their way down to the planning commission's reaction in the future. I wanted to just spend a few minutes describing the redistricting redistricting. Plan that is underway and the strategy involved with that effort.
Yes, sir, actually, yesterday at Town Council, uh. I've got some further direction, really, you know, at 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 the uh termination of all census counts, you know, there. The community must redistrict per per the the per the codes. We will soon, and Krista's actually our town clerk is working on a date, we will bring forward um. Over the next few weeks, an opportunity for public input. Um to take a look at a series of base maps. Um that would accomplish the town councils. Uh parameters of 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 the redistricting policy as they they set in place. A little while ago via resolution. And so um I. You know, for for lack of diving too too deep into to redistricting today, I know that there's some. Potential, not potential, there's some meeting dates that will be on our calendar very soon. Our first kickoff meeting will be very public. Will work with the community here, public input, will work with town council. As they, as they refine the district lines. And again, a lot of it has uh to do with the the parameters and framework. Of the of of the recent town council adopted resolution, if you guys as a planning commission don't have that, I can definitely get it sent to all of you.
Very good, well, thank you very much.
And 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 members of the planning commission, it it might be good next month if if you'd like a briefing. On redistricting, and we we have some background information and and some of that relevant data. Um I'd be happy to come back um and or have Josh Gruber come back. And give you that that the deeper dive overview.
That'd be great.
Okay. Teresa, I'll work with you on that, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, wonderful.
Mr. Hen.
Hey, Mark, enjoyed the presentation, um just to get my arms around it, the the our plan. That's that's the town's twenty year plan and and work, and and that's the big comprehensive. Uh looking forward type plan and and what we have that that you talked about today. Is is like a a two year bite of that of that. Comprehensive plan, is that how you would look at this?
Yes, it's a fiscal year twenty two and twenty three. Really, twenty one, twenty two, but twenty three will be here before we know it, uh strategic plan, and it's. A time for me to, you know, annually, maybe twice a year, work with town council to really examine. Our current priorities and either. You know, celebrate that things got accomplished. Take, take some elements off the book, out of the book that might not make sense anymore. And then also to add some additional elements out of the comp plan or. Actually, any pressures of the community as as we as we move forward, Tom, so. But yeah, the our plan's definitely a twenty year plan, but the strategic plan is a living document. And it's to be assessed a few times a year, but definitely scrubbed and refined with town council members at least. One time per year.
Okay, so you'd be going through this process uh. On an annual basis, following the the plan, it's very extensive. And um you know, thank goodness you got a uh a. Good and awesome staff that can that can. Um implement this because there's a lot in here, and I was very impressed with with um. With with. How complete and extensive this is. Um I guess my my. My. Ask within, and this might not be for you, this might be for the mayor, but. With with all this, all this detail. Could you come out and and look at the island from sixty thousand feet? In twenty years and tell us what it's going to look like, what what is our vision for Hilton Head Island? Um as detailed in in our plan, is there a verbal? Uh dream that you could or 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 canvas that you could paint on that that tells us where we're heading?
Well, it's a good question, someone's asked me that recently. And it made me really think, one, I don't have the answer, right, I I I don't, I don't know what the island. Looks like in twenty years, I I think from a philosophical standpoint, I hope it's exactly the same. Just that we evolve, right, so that that alone. The work in the redevelopment districts. And the work in that connected section and the work in our capital improvement program should start shaping us, right? So policy aside, think as we reset or rethink or even confirm. The zoning, which is your DNA of your built environment. As we rethink that or reset it or confirm it. That should let us know, are we. Commercial at the Mid Island Track or are there mixed, is it a mixed use availability? Are homes up and down Marshland as well as um in other parts of our community outside the gates? Four units an acre, six units an acre, twelve units an acre? And if so, where and and how does that factor into the zoning map? And then I also think our capital improvement program, this year, I'm I'm very excited to get into some budget discussions with town council. I in in my mind, and I've I've said this, great capital projects take about three years. Because if you plan it, you should hear from people, you should refine it, you should hear from the stakeholders and really think through the plan. Then you go off and, you know, really design and permit, and then it takes you some time to to build while you you plan your funding strategy. So Tom, I I I do think that the elements of this strategic plan as it relates to redevelopment districts. Capacity thinking as a baseline. Um growth framework, future land use map, calibrating zoning and development standards. As well as really implementing the Parks and Rec Plan. And implementing the last study and implementing some of our corridor plans. Those two sides of the brain, so to speak, should shape our future. But we're not there to figure everything out yet. You know what, I don't, I don't hide behind the fact that I think great places. Have a whole bunch of things that make them unique. But every great place has great streets and every great place has great parks. Right, so that capital program is driving those two elements. But again, there's a whole bunch of questions to ask and community to be involved and council to be involved to know what. You know, sixty thousand feet, twenty years from now look like. Um but if you look at the strap plan. From land preservation programs to capital improvement programs. To to challenging the status quo on our zoning districts that I think um. Need some improvement. I think the answers are are in there. As we work towards accomplishing those those priorities. Hopefully that helps answer that question.
Would you call it?
Actually, I agree with everybody, this has been extremely well done. My one concern is telecommunications, where I've been on that for probably. Ten years, why we need to get out of the way. And and largely the suppliers pay for the money, we pay for whatever we do. When you come in, AT&amp;T comes in, they pay for it, and then we get the benefit of it. I don't think we've done a real good job about welcoming in. Uh telecommunications companies and making it work because the future is there. And I would like to see more attention on that, uh more concerns about that.
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh Mark, first of all, uh as Chair of the Commission. Um I have been searching for how can we best be of service to town council? And uh moving forward with the strategic plan. I mean, our role is one of uh uh development and redevelopment is in our charter. And uh and the comprehensive plan, and I'm so glad that. Uh both in the personal meetings and here today. You have uh made reference to the fact that the strategic plan goes hand in glove with the overall comprehensive plan. You know, as somebody who was on the development team and chairman of the comprehensive plan committee. And on the commission of all this was taking place. I appreciate your uh working uh feverishly to make sure that both of those things work together. Uh we are a recommending body to town council. I mean, we have very few uh legal decisions to make on things. But uh in in the role of a uh recommending body to town council, I I'm trying to. Come to grips with how we can be of the best use uh to the town. Is is the commission in uh helping to move all of these initiatives forward. Any thoughts along those lines?
Well. You know, first and foremost, the fact that our plan is in place, I know that doesn't help the future, but the fact that the planning commission and staff and the community. Led that that hard charge, which is an insurmountable effort, looking back if you think about it. Um the fact that you put that in place is phenomenal. Um that's one of the hardest things ever to do in a community is to find consensus on a plan like that. Um but. I know that all that hard work, all that hard work, and then all of a sudden it's over, and then, you know, you're getting a. Agenda item or two along the way, a planning commission, there's this this big drop off. One, I think is just the staff and getting some direction from town council. And making sure that we have the right team in place to bring forward redevelopment district. Corridor plan, some capital projects, some master plans on those spaces, you know. Making sure that we bring what we need to to planning commission at the appropriate time. That that that's still being worked on, right, we're two months into a strategic plan adoption. Uh shared with you what those, what I think those high level priority items are for planning commission. You can just see from the timeline and the updates. We're still some months out from having those as high priority, heavy lift, planning commission. Um agenda items. And so I think that we just have to do a good job, I'm not saying we're doing a a bad one, but we have to do a good job. As the staff liaison to planning commission to let you know what's in the pipeline. Right, so that we just don't throw it on you.
That would be most helpful, um we're, you you know, I noticed that there are some twenty seven items. Uh in the strategic plan that are going to the public uh planning committee of town council. And uh I wonder, you know, how many of those will cross our deck on their way to that committee? Uh any thoughts along those lines?
Oh, I think a lot of them. I think a lot of them, the public planning committee, you know, typically public planning committees working on public policy. And those elements that are planning and. And those elements that are planning and zoning and development related need to come to planning. To planning commission by law, let alone, we just need your help. So yes, I think a lot of those translate to planning commission recommendation. As it's coming in and out of public planning committee before council.
We stand ready to be of assistance, especially with development, redevelopment, uh, the Mid-Island Plan. Um, you know, I've always thought that uh, this island should be a a destination of many dimensions. And uh, in addition to the real estate aspects of running the town. Uh, I also believe that uh, we need leadership in in other areas too, and that goes into. Uh, making sure that the public health access is uh, is good on this island. And uh, and other issues that are, I think, of great importance. So uh, I wanna. Just say that I think in addition to the the real estate components of running this town. We have other leadership components that that need to be emphasized as well, e- especially in ensuring. Uh, good, good health for our residents and visitors. Uh, thank you, Mark, for your uh, uh, being with us here at this particular meeting. I'm gonna call on Teresa. Cause I know we have some members of of the Gullah Gichi Task Force and uh, maybe the zoning board of appeals and re. The dread design review board that may be in on the call. Teresa, do you wanna see if anyone else wants to ask Mark a question?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. We do have from the Gullah Gichi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force Chairman Levon Stevens. Levon, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Levon. Do you have any questions?
Uh, not, not other than uh, uh, what's been uh, presented before. I I but I. Thank you for allowing me to speak, uh, Mr. Chairman. And uh, and and Mr. Orlando, um. I I just wanted to applaud you on your efforts and as you had mentioned before, that some of the work that's gone into lay the groundwork to the strategic plan and. Uh, being included in there with the work that we're doing with our Gullah Gichi Task Force. Um, we appreciate the all that you're doing and jumping in, as we said, drinking from a fire hose. Um, and hitting the ground running. So we're looking forward to advancing uh. That part of the Gullah Gichi Cultural Preservation Task Force. Uh, I I would also say to the the general public that what we have identified as cultural preservation. Is uh, important to the Gullah Gichi uh, community. But that piece is also uh, very important to the community as a whole. So when we start thinking about cultural preservation, I hope it is something that we all as a community can get behind, embrace. And uh, support in a lot of ways, and we're looking forward to working with uh. Mr. Orlando and the town staff and and the planning commission. Again, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. From the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have our Vice Chair, Dr. Anna Ponder. Dr. Ponder, are you with us?
I am.
Thank you. Did you have any comments or questions?
No, I I thank everyone for this wonderful presentation. I'm enjoying it very much and learning a lot. Happy to be listening.
Thank you. Also, from the BCA, we have Ms. Loudermilk. Lisa, Lisa Loudermilk, do you have any questions or comments? We can circle back to Ms. Loudermilk. We also have Mr. Fingerhut, David Fingerhut.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. I I have no questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walzak? Charlie, are you there with us?
Yes, I'm here. I just, I I don't have a camera hooked up, so sorry about that. Um, yeah, I I, in fact, I was surprised today uh, to receive the strategic. Action plan in my mailbox. Uh, I thank those who made the effort to. Get out to us and of course, with, I think that just happened today or yesterday, so I haven't had a chance. I, as we were. Uh. As I was listening to the discussion, I was going through it or trying to follow through it. And the the one thing that really interests me and and I I kinda lost, I lost the page, so I can't really refer to it right now, but. Uh, the uh, the activity that's going on with regard to the the gateway project, let's call it. Um, I I I'd, it'd be nice to be brought up to date on that if if anyone can do that at this time, or maybe this is not. They. As it's, it's high on my list, so. But other than that, I mean, the the amount of effort that has gone into this is great. I echo those other. Uh, laudable comments. Um, and that's about it. Thanks for allowing me to say something.
Thank you. Mr. Christian?
Thanks, Teresa. It's uh, two comments. It's, it's nice to see many of my old colleagues on the planning commission. And Levon, it's always great to to see you and Mark, uh, just wanna pass along. Uh, comments I hear in the community that you are doing a a splendid job. Uh, and you know, keep up the good work. All the feedback from my end of of the island has been extremely positive and uh. Um, a breath of fresh air, so you know, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Means a lot. It takes a good team. I've got a great group of people I'm I'm working with here.
A amen. I know exactly what you're saying. Kudos to them as well.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa, Ms. Loudermilk?
Yeah, yeah, I kinda figured out the unmute, unmute button now. Uh, again, um, I mean, I am very impressed and blown away, I think, by the breadth of issues um. That have been addressed in the plan and like um, Mark O'Neill. Um, brought up or questioned, I think, you know, prioritizing um, is is obviously key and. You know, how how you prioritize out of this list of of initiatives, um. You know, that that in itself's a challenge, but I I'm very interested to see how the priorities shake out, how that progresses.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. From our Design Review Board, we have our Chair, Kathy Foss. Ms. Foss?
Yes, I'm here. Um, great presentation. I. I hate um, to hear the word prioritize because if you could get all the right people with all the stuff you've set aside and 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 do committees. Um, and that's a lot of committees to oversee, but if you could. As you said, let's not shrink it down to something and not make other things happen. I would love to see it all happen. Um. As far as cultural preservation for the Gullah Gichi Committee, that's like strong and dear to my heart. I uh, volunteer at the. Museum, the Coastal Discovery Museum, and we have a lot of people that come in and we have few panels, but all people get very interested in the. Gullah Gichi Committee and or the Gullah Gichi um, group and. Wanna know more, wanna know more, and I think our visitors wanna know more, but I think also the island people wanna know so much more. We have the Gullah Gichi Tour that happens and everyone who jumps off of that wants to know more. I saw the plans of the Mitchellville. Um. What they want Mitchellville to look like, like it looked like before, and it it's so exciting. That's gonna bring so much. Um, people to our island and so much excitement to the island. And then I, I'm not bragging about my volunteerism, but I also work. In construction at Habitat for Humanity and Deep Well Off Island, but we're working on affordable housing. And affordable housing to me is extremely important, extremely important. We've got. Five-story apartments and five-story villas going up on the island where we could have much better use of that land. And get some affordable housing that could be townhomes, apartments, whatever, and I would. Gladly volunteer to be on the Affordable Housing Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Chairman, I have a four o'clock that I have to be at, so Teresa, I'm not sure how many other folks with questions, but I I do need to sign off soon and. Jump in. Are there a lot more questions?
No, sir. We do have one more uh, DRB member from Mr. Ben Brown.
Outstanding work. Enjoy your four o'clock. Good afternoon.
Hey, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very kind. We appreciate your time and uh, all the effort that you and the staff have put into this and Godspeed.
Thank you, sir. I'm grateful for my opportunity. Uh, I think the strap plan is the first time it's in place in a little while that. I think is communicated this way. And the more we get together with Town Council and staff and and have some input from the community. Uh, the the better that book will be. So I'm I'm very pleased with V one of the document, but know there's some work to do in the future. To to add some elements and and get some things done to shape our future. So. Congrats to you all and thank you for serving uh, the way you do.
Thanks for being with us. Um, we have the planning commission, as we have a few minor things left to do. Uh, I have no particular chairman's report today other than. Uh, was my, uh, I was very glad we could get Mark to come and join us. That was my, my been my plan for some time. Uh, on the undercommittee reports, uh, uh, Mark, is anything with regard to CIP that is on the horizon?
No, but I was excited to hear from Mark Orlando that uh, we'd be getting together in mid-February with Jen, who is a wonderful staff member and. Hopefully, we can get to work on twenty-three. As you can see in the book, twenty-two is pretty much put to bed.
Exactly. Uh, Mr. Campbell, uh, anything on the comprehensive plan?
Nothing at all.
Nothing new, okay. Uh, also, John, anything on the Gullah Gichi Task Force uh, that uh, should be brought to our attention?
No, nothing.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I might, uh, I also serve on that task force and just a quick update. Last Tuesday, we had a um, Stark Neighborhoods meeting on the uh, Mid-Island Initiative. Uh, redevelopment area and and it was very well attended and there was a a lot of really good feedback, important feedback for. Um, things that might be included and considered for that uh, Mid-Island redevelopment track. So um. I thought that uh, that was a a uh, a really uh, good, good meeting for for all the parties involved.
Well, Tom, is is there a uh, is there a written list of these uh, recommendations, suggestions that maybe we could take a look at?
You know, I'll I'll bet um, we could get that and um, let me, let me work on that.
Okay, that'd be helpful and if I get one from you, we'll send it to all the commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking up. Um, Mr. Perry, LMO, it looks like under the strategic plan, LMO is gonna be busy this year, so.
It, yeah, I I think. I I think I just learned about that too. Yeah, so uh, it looks like uh, we're gonna have some exciting things to address uh, in the second part of this year.
All right. And uh, Mr. Alfred, uh, on the rules procedure, uh, is there anything new? Do we had to pull back something? Did we not on that?
Uh. There, there's nothing that uh, has not already been uh, reported at the last meeting and in the last minutes.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Steve. Um, all right, uh, staff reports, uh, are there anything uh, to report from staff?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, then, gentlemen, thank you for your time today. I think we uh, we learned a great deal about where this town is headed. And uh, we will be uh, I I think serious contributors to that effort along the way. Uh, so thank you for being with us today and I hereby uh, adjourn this particular meeting of the planning commission. Thank you so much.